...a birthday here at the council. Not everybody that it is councilman Cisco's birthday today. Happy birthday, councilman. I think you'd be better off if we didn't sing to you.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. We'll call the February 1st, 2011 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order and ask Councilman Randy Wallace to lead us in our invocation and pledge. Please rise.
You pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of leadership that you've given to the members of this city council. We ask that you give us wisdom so the decision we will be making will be pleasing to you and make Jackson a better place to live. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, roll call. You can show everyone present, except for the councilman died. Council received a copy of the minutes of the January 4th, 2011 meeting, and if there are no objections or any corrections, we'll let those minutes stand. We have a special event this morning where we honor two people. I'm going to ask them to come up as I come down the podium, but this situation is honoring two members, two employees of Waste Management, Mr. Eric Cobb and Mr. Albert Irvin. And I'm also going to ask Mr. Brandon Cologne, Waste Management District Operations Manager, and Kim Harville, Waste Management Territory Manager, and our own Kathleen Honeycutt, if they would come to the podium, and I'll be right down. Well, it is an honor for me this morning to provide a letter of commendation to two individuals who were vigilant in their job, who cares about Jackson, Tennessee, cares about residents. One of the best services I think we have in the city is the collection of our solid waste by Waste Management. We're here this morning to honor two of their employees for performing their duty above what's expected. This is a letter of commendation. We have two, one going to each of them. Whereas on November 16th, 2010, Waste Management employees, Mr. Eric Cobb and Mr. Albert Irvin, were making their normal rounds on Swan Drive when they noticed two men loading a television into the back of a truck. Whereas realizing this may be a burglary attempt, they instinctively picked up a cellphone and notified the Jackson Police Department. Whereas after JPD described the truck to officers in the area, a police officer promptly identified and stopped the vehicle. And whereas the two men in the truck were arrested and charged with aggravated burglary, simple possession of marijuana, and theft of property over $1,000. Whereas Mr. Cobb and Mr. Irvin performed an invaluable service for the citizens of Jackson by protecting the property of Jackson residents and by serving as a role model for other city personnel to follow. Now therefore, I, Jerry, guess Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby commend Mr. Eric Cobb and Mr. Albert Irvin and urge all citizens to recognize their vigilance in recognizing and reporting criminal activity, thereby thwarting a burglary attempt. And guys, it's indeed an honor for me on behalf of the Jackson City Council and the citizens of Jackson to present these letters of commendation to each of you.
On behalf of Waste Management, Albert Irvin, and Eric Cobb, we want to thank the mayor and the city council for what you have done for us today. It is our goal in Waste Management is we provide service to the City of Jackson to add value and also to add service and beyond as we try to do the things that we are committed to do as far as the organization. Again, we thank you and we appreciate this opportunity and honor that you have given these two gentlemen who are well-deserving. Thanks.
Before we have open invitation to public comment, let me ask the council if you would strike item one under new business and also item number four under new business. This is a time to indicate under invitation to public comment, is anyone present who would like to speak on any item under new business that's on the agenda? If you would kindly hold your hand up, then I'll try to recognize you when we get to that particular item. Seeing none, we'll proceed. Item seven is first reading. Consideration Ordinance to Rezone Property Located at 1550 Hollywood Drive from RG2, General Residential District to SC1 Plan Unit Commercial Development District submitted by T. L. M. Associates on behalf of Mary Sue Hall, along with the staff initiated larger area located on the east side of US 45 bypass from RS1 Single Family Residential District to SC1 Plan Unit Commercial Development District comprising a total of 9.1 acres, more or less. Vote.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
You have in your packet the materials pertaining to this rezoning request. This was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending approval of this rezoning to you.
Questions from council?
Motion to accept.
Okay, let's have, let's open this as ordinance on first reading, and let me ask in public hearing, open that public hearing, see if there's anyone present who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion.
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 And a second, any discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Item two under new business, consideration of a resolution to submit an application to the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development requesting community development block grant disaster recovery funds. I think we have some staff members here, Blake and someone, Steve Raper from JEA, if council has any questions about this grant.
Yes.
Okay, could we have some people down front here to try to answer some questions about this particular grant? The record reflect that Mr. Raper is here from JEA and Dr. Lake is here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My questions have to do more with the cost estimate than it does with the proposal to request. In it, we're talking about 4.49, yeah, $4,494,500,000 plus or minus, I'm assuming, in which we are asking for sewer system improvements, generators, residential inspection, engineering design, other engineering services and contingencies. And in our discussion Thursday, we talked about how much of this is actually to be used with JEAs as much as how much of it is used for city property. Can you give me those numbers again one more time?
Sure.
Because I didn't write them down.
The total of the, well, the overall is about 70% JEA and 30% city. It's a joint application with JEA and the city for just under $4.5 million. The generator total, it makes up about $1.4 million, and the wastewater system improvements total is estimated to be $2 million.
The generators, how many generators for JEA's pumping system?
For JEA?
Yeah.
There are two for JEA and three for the city.
The sewer system improvements, the $2.2 million, can you give me a little bit of background on that one, too?
Sure. This is for wastewater collection system and recognizing that that infrastructure system is aged and in need of repairs or improvements. It involves three different areas. One we call the Anderson Branch Outfall, which is basically East Chester and Highway 70 area. Two is the Rothrock Branch, we're calling it, which is basically east of Hayes Street, one of the primary collection lines over in that area. And then the South Fork Interceptor, which is the south fork of the river west of Highway 45.
Were these units damaged during the May flooding? Is that what we're looking at, or is it just the age?
The biggest damage occurred in the final request here for the Bell's Highway Lift Station, which was flooded pretty heavily. So this is a mediation effort to make improvements to that.
Part of the other questions that I have has to do with engineering design and services. Does that also part of what we're looking at as well?
Yes.
Or has these services already been performed and we're looking to collect?
Those services are, have not been performed before the grant would be awarded anyway, but they are included in this total.
And the residential inspection as well? Is that correct?
Correct.
Or is that part of ours? I'm not sure. There's a residential inspection as well?
Yeah, it's just inspection services with any rehab that might go on, particularly on the collection system.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
On the, is this a reimbursable type grant where we do the work and then we get reimbursed for it? Or they just give us the money and then we spend it?
It's a reimbursement at 100%.
Okay. So we've actually got to do the money and then they, or spend the money and then reimburse us for it then?
Correct.
Okay. This is not going to affect our other community development block grant funding, is it?
No.
But this is actually, it's a new self-standing grant we're asking for.
That's right.
And we aren't just asking, I think. Is that correct?
Do what?
We are just asking.
Just asking what?
We're just asking.
Yes. The grant won't be awarded till July or August.
Okay, okay. Is it, pretty sure we're going to get the grant, or, I mean, if we approve it here, or do we have any idea?
It is a competitive grant process.
Okay. So if we don't get the grant, I guess the question is, is the city and the JEAs going to have to pay for these costs ourselves, or these improvements are going to have to be done regardless?
They probably wouldn't be done.
They won't be done.
Including the aged units, is that right?
Excuse me?
There's some aged units that are older, and we were talking about that earlier, that part of these costs.
As far as the generators go?
No, I think a part of the sewer system improvements.
Sure, it would be blended into JEA's future plans for rehab.
So they would be done eventually?
Eventually.
Yeah. Thank you.
But...
Sorry.
No, it's, thank you, Dave.
Okay. Any other questions of Raper and Blake?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion for approval. It's a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Item three under new business is consideration of the annual audit presentation by Alexander Thompson Arnold P L C on the city's finances for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2010. Here.
Good morning.
Good morning. I appreciate you all's time this morning. I know you have a long agenda, so I will probably, I'll try not to take more time than I should. Hopefully you all have had a chance to look at the, our audit that was prepared of the city for the year end of June 30th, 2010. And what I was going to do is just cover a few of the financial highlights and then talk about our findings and then see if you all had any questions that we can answer. If you'll turn to page nine, or if you don't have it in front of you, I'll just tell you what I'm looking at. That's our opinion on the financial statements, and it's two pages of verbiage, but the key paragraph is the third paragraph where we do give our opinion, and that's basically an unqualified opinion, which means that the following financial statements do represent fairly the operations, the financial position of the city and the operations for the year end of June 30th, 2010. Now with that, you will flip over to page 21. 21 and 22 and 23 are what's called the statement of net assets, or to use commercial language for financial statements, the balance sheet of the city. I want to briefly explain what all is included in these. The operations of JTA are, is what is called a blended component unit. It's kind of blended into the financial statements. You don't see it separately at this level that you see on this page. It's under the business type activities. The off on the right-hand side, you see two component units. These are not directly involved with the operations of the city, but for various reasons, they are considered component units of the city, one of which is JEA, which is pulled into the city's financial statements because of the city's guarantee on some of its debt. And the other is a new one this year, the Jackson Community Redevelopment Agency, and that is pulled into the city's financial statements because of its dependence on the city for its funding to this date. Plus, you all do appoint the members of those two boards. Anyway, the first couple of columns, the business type activities, those comply, comprise the funds that represent, are designed to, at some point, pay for their own operations. There's four funds in that column, the landfill, Jackson Transit Authority, Sportsplex Operation, and a community development fund, revolving loan fund. And the first column that says governmental activities, that is essentially everything else that the city, all the other funds of the city. The total assets of the governmental funds at June 30th, 2007, or 2010, were $187 million, and of the business type activities, just under $18 million. And this does include all fixed assets and infrastructure of the city. You'll flip over to page 23. This is the net asset section of the balance sheet, or the net worth of the city, if you will. It's a little bit confusing, so I'll explain some of what this is. The, you'll see there, the governmental activities, the net worth is $85 million, and the business type activities, it's just under $10 million, 9.9 million. Now that doesn't mean you have $85 million of cash sitting in a bank account somewhere. It'd be really nice if it did. One of the components of this is the capital assets, net of any outstanding debt that was incurred, the financials assets. And that is $30 million, so obviously you've got to subtract that from the number in trying to arrive at what you actually have in net assets that's in the bank, so to speak, that you can spend. So that balance is about $54 million that's left. And just over about $2.5 million of that has some reserves on it or restrictions on it for some reason, and the balance of 52 million is essentially what's unrestricted, available for spending in the future. If you'll flip over to page 24, I want to, this is the equivalent, the governmental equivalent of an income statement. It's quite confusing to look at, so I want to kind of give you a brief explanation of what the numbers mean on here. For those of you who have commercial businesses and look at your own financial statements, normally you see, top to bottom, you see the revenue at the top, expenses at the bottom, and net income, or expenses underneath the revenue, then net income at the bottom. The net income is at the bottom of this, but it's a little bit convoluted as to how you get there, so that's what we'll go through. The first column on this presentation lists the expenses of operating in the various areas of operations that the city has. So it's not to make this a three or four-page statement, they are fairly condensed here as far as the operational areas. And this does include depreciation on your fixed assets. The list, the column that says expenses there. Then the next three columns are revenues that are directly related to the operations of those areas. They're either revenues that are generated by the operation of that area. An example I'll give you, because it's a big number that stands out, under public works, you'll notice under charges for services, you've got $10.8 million. Well, a good chunk of that is the charges for solid waste collection. That's a revenue that's directly connected to those, that area of operation. Then the next two columns are operating grants that are designated for those areas and capital grants that are designated for capital needs in those areas. The fifth column that you see then is actually, and you'll notice that's a bracketed number, that's by design in most cases, that's actually the cost net of the related revenues of operating in all those areas. And then when you go on down from that, you'll see down underneath the list of the general revenues, these are revenues that are generally, aren't restricted to any particular area or generated by an area of expenditure. So it's essentially, you have in governmental activities, $51 million worth of net expenses, which is the expenses minus the associated revenues that are funded by the general revenues of the city. And we have that same presentation for the governmental activities as well as the business type activities. Okay, that's really all the comments I was going to make on the numbers unless you all have any questions later on. If you'll go to page 113. Not that the intervening information is not important, if you, it's very important. If you have insomnia, I guarantee you it'll take care of it. Much better than a novel will. Page 113, this is our internal control and compliance letter and findings that relate to that, and we do have a finding to go over. Essentially, we talk about whether or not we have found any serious deficiencies in internal controls. And we do find, in every client we audit, we do find issues, we bring to their attention. Those don't always rise to the level of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And then that, on the next page, we talk about material non-compliance, where we find that a material instance of non-compliance with some law, regulation, whatever that you all are subject to that does affect your financial statements, or could affect your financial statements. With the, with one exception, and it's a finding that's a material weakness as well as results in non-compliance, we generally did not find anything of a significant nature. If you'll flip over to page 118, we'll talk about what that is. This, this compliance finding was, we really didn't expect to find this, but unfortunately we did, and it's, I believe it's been corrected now, so it's nothing you need to worry about going forward. You know, there was much discussion several years ago about the American Recovery Relief Act and all of the disclosure and that was unprecedented, or supposed to be unprecedented up to that point, of what was funded under that act and how the money was spent. And the state of Tennessee, shortly after ARRA was passed, decided that they did not want the state to be a poster child for non-compliance, so they added a layer of requirements on top of the ARRA requirements. I'm not sure it was justified, but, you know, the legislature didn't call up the auditors in the state and ask their opinion, they just did it. And these are what is called the Tennessee Recovery Act Management Directives, or TRAM, if you've probably, if you've talked to anybody about this, you've probably heard that acronym. And that is a list of about a dozen things that the legislature said, if you're going to get ARRA money, you have to be sure that you do these 12 things. For the most part, that was done. There was one requirement that anybody who receives Recovery Act funding is supposed, in Tennessee, is supposed to do a risk assessment. Before they start spending the money, they do an assessment of what might go wrong and put some controls in place to keep that from happening. On one of your grants, it was, and it was a material grant, that's why we're talking about this, the East Chester project that was funded by T.DOT. I think there was a miscommunication between y'all's staff and T.DOT, and your staff thought T.DOT was doing it, and I'm not sure what T.DOT thought. Anyway, that risk assessment was not done. Now, that doesn't mean that anything was done wrong, because there wasn't. That was, we looked at all the other documentation on that grant, and everything was in good shape. They just, they didn't do the, what should have been done on the front end to say what might go wrong, but that doesn't mean they did anything wrong. They did everything right. So it's, and it's kind of like, you know, well, if they did everything right, why do you have to say something about this? Well, my opinion is, I shouldn't have to say anything about it, but the state of Tennessee thinks otherwise, so we, and they do come and look at our work papers. So that is kind of, it's, it sounds like a big deal, but it really isn't because everything worked out fine. And I think the, since we discussed this with your staff, I think that risk assessment's been done, so, and this project is still ongoing, I believe, so this should not repeat next year.
Mike, that doesn't mean we're going to lose any of the funding, does it?
No. Well, I mean, that's my opinion. This is very common. I mean, we, I thought between us and the state, and I thought the word got out last year that this need be, needed to be done, but we're probably on about a third of the entities that we audit, you know, we find that they've not done this. So, and surprisingly, for a lot of them, just like you all, this is the only finding we have related to the expenditure of the ARRA money is the extra requirement that the state of Tennessee put on it. They had noble intent, and I'm just not sure that it was all that is necessary to do. Anyway, this, if you will, flip back to page 120, that's the city's response to that, and it's, I believe at this point, it's been taken care of. Okay, if you look on page 119, this was a finding we had last year, and one of the requirements is that we take findings that we had in previous year and disclose if they still exist or if they've been corrected. This was got, this was to do with the reconciliation of grant funds at the community development department, and that has been corrected. Okay. You've also got a letter from us, which we, we refer to it as our management letter. These are just items that don't rise to the level of material or significant. We just wanted to bring them to your attention, and if you will, I will go to that now. It's not bound as a separate page in the audit, so it should just be a separate letter that you have. First item in that was several minor issues with cash receipts. The city's cash collecting process is, for a lot of its activities, is not centralized. It couldn't be centralized as big as the city operations are. You collect parks and recreation receipts all around the city, the various other activities in which there's collections somewhere other than in the recorder's office. The city's controls, which we think are good, require all of that to come down here and be reconciled before it goes in the bank. Well, the difficulty that creates is you've got a lot of diverse places collecting cash. In state, regulation requires that it be deposited within three days, and sometimes it's just impossible to get done, because they collect it, they bring it down here, it's, the receipts are checked and reconciled here before it goes in the bank. So it's, sometimes you just can't get all that done in three days. This is, I think this is a regular occurrence. This is probably the most common issue we run across in governments, especially ones the size of Jackson. It's just almost impossible to comply with that three-day requirement. It's not something we worry too much about. It's, we're more concerned about, are the controls working, not whether or not you get it to the bank in three days or four days. Couple other minor issues on cash receipts. There was not always consistency about marking the receipts, whether you're collecting cash or checks. And also voided receipts. And also voided receipts were not being approved. Now, the void of receipt issue, I think that's been corrected at this point. Whether you're collecting cash or checks, that's a very, another very common finding, and that's just the, the process of training people to be sure they always indicate that on the receipt. So I believe that's probably also in the process of having some action on it. Okay, the second item there, and this has got to do also with cash receipts at the sportsplex. And that is the, the one location that does, or one of the locations that does make their own bank deposit, simply because of the volume, especially certain times of the year, the volume of cash that was going in there, the decision was made, they would make their own And the issue is, they are then supposed to deliver all the supporting documentation for their receipts to the recorder's office, and then there's a reconciliation process that occurs down at the recorder's office. These, the supporting documentation was not being remitted timely to the recorder's office, and I believe that, that has also been done, or been corrected at this point. Okay, item number three on page two of that letter. The city has a lot of grants. If you'll notice, there's a, there's a page in the, there's about five pages actually towards the back of the audit report that lists all the grant programs, both federal and state, that the city has. Last year, the city had about five point five million dollars in city and federal, or state and federal grants. So it's a significant portion of your budget. And the responsibility for those grants is, is spread out, it's, you know, each department that has grants it wants to apply for, I guess, are encouraged to apply for them, and the primary compliance responsibility lies with the department that applied for the grant. And that's a good thing, but there's also a risk in that. What, what you usually have happen then is you have people whose focus is providing services to the citizens, you know, picking up their trash pile outside, out in front of the street, emergency services. Their focus, their job description is not dealing with page after page after page of federal and state grant minutia. And consequently, it's, you know, sometimes the reconciliation of the grant monies that you receive in is difficult to do, simply because there's no centralized, or well, there is a centralized place for a lot of this grant documentation, it just doesn't always get there. And it's, it's then difficult also for the, the accounting office to properly classify all that stuff, when they start, because, because quite often, these grant revenues come in as wired to your bank account. And, and I know the accounting staff then has to sometimes go on a, a search to find out whose money that is. You know, what, what we're recommending here, and this is, again, since we didn't put this in the main body of our report, it's not a big deal, but it is something you need, I think we would suggest you pay some attention to. There's some requirements you have now, that, that all the grant documentation, at least reporting of what grants are expected and when pay requests go in, has got to come to the, to recorder's office for them to have a record of it, that's occurring most of the time, sometimes it doesn't. It's just something you kind of have to stay on top of. We would suggest that you all have a grants coordinator, who, and that does not mean that person manages all the grants. The actual day-to-day management of the grant still needs to reside with the department head, or their designate, that's actually overseeing the grant, gets the benefit of the grant. This would sort of be the grant ombudsman, I guess, if you got to give them a title, that anybody, any department head applying for a grant, they have to let this person know that, that they've applied for one when they get authorization for the grant, they have to let them know, yeah, we got approved for the grant. They send copies of the pay requests in to them for their review. And, and also, this person would, when a department notifies them that they're getting a grant, they would get the grant contract out and read it and say, okay, these are the areas you need to watch, that you, that you, we don't want to mess up in. And that's the one thing right now that's probably not being done. I think there is some communication about grants that exist and, and the pay requests that go in. Now, all that being said, the, I, we've been to auditors for a long time, I don't remember an instance of the city having to give money back because they didn't do something right. Or if there was, it was very minor, but there's always a first time, so that's, that's the reason for this. With that being said, the issue we just talked about, about that TRAM, the TRAM directive's not being filed in one area, I really don't think, I mean, I suppose somebody up in Washington could say, give us the money back, considering nationwide, all of the other issues with the expenditure of ARRA money, on, on a level of severity, that's pretty minor. So I don't, really don't think that that, you need to worry about that. In item number four there, there was a couple of funds that are, where the expenditures exceeded the budget, it's just something you need to watch, especially coordinate with the Community Development Department, since they operate somewhat independently under the direction of the Jackson Housing Authority, you know, do coordinate with them when you all do budget amendments. Two of the funds that had budget overruns were theirs. The last item there, we noted this in previous years, y'all got various bank accounts that were, and, or insurance accounts on your books that relate to the health insurance premiums and the claims paid. It's a big job to keep those reconciled, and sometimes that's not as current as it needs to be, you just need to continue to focus on trying to do that currently, preferably on a monthly basis rather than letting that get behind. Because there's, especially the health insurance arrangement, there's an awful lot of activity that goes through that, and it's a major job if that gets several months behind in getting that reconciled. With that, I'll conclude my comments. Y'all, as usual, y'all's staff was very, very cooperative in helping us, you've got a good staff, and I'd like to commend them for their assistance in making our job, it's never easy, but they make it, they do make it easier. And if you have any questions, I'll, I'll be happy to entertain those. If you got a very minute question about why one line item ran over the budget, I may not be able to answer that, but I will get you the answer.
Questions for Stuart?
Question. Good morning. How are you doing this morning? This is a big budget, now, this is a big audit, and I appreciate the detail and the work. This is my fourth year of looking at the, at these audits, and it seems like the letters that you write us every year is the same letter, almost every year. We seem to, to, to seem, I guess we seem to break all these small rules all the time, or every year, it may be different areas. But the, I'm trying to, to take a, an aggressive look at this, which area do you think, in the, in the letter that you sent us, do you think that we actually can do something to do and make some improvement in? Is it the CDBG grant funds audit, is it the just grant fund coordinator, is that something that you consider most important?
I would say of the five items listed in the letter, some of these I think have been taken care of, you know, the problem with cash receipts, that's just, I'm not sure that y'all can ever get rid of that, and, and I don't like to comment on it every year, but the comptroller says if they don't meet the three-day deposit requirement, you got to point it out. You know, probably that grants coordinator, I think, is, is the, is probably the most significant item, the, I think everybody knows, you know, the budget problems that the state of Tennessee is facing. You know, the federal government's got budget problems too, they just don't know it, they won't admit it. And sooner or later, you know, the, the grants may be scarcer than they are now. And what they will do then is they will start saying, okay, who does the best job of managing this? You know, if we have to establish some priorities, now, this is leaving politics out of it, which I know you can't always do, but if we have to establish priorities, who does, which governments do the best job of managing this process, let's give them the money. And, and so that, if you had to pick one, I would say that's the most important one.
Thank you.
And it, I, I do have a nonprofit that had, had an unrelated finding to the grants management process, but that became, they applied for a grant from a foundation, and that became a criteria for awarding the grant, was whether or not they had any audit findings. And even though they had one that was totally unrelated to their management of grants, that knocked them out of receiving the money, so, you know, I suspect that may become more prevalent.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Stuart, as far as the audit?
This is a big document, if y'all have any questions at all, you know, I'm, I'm here in town, so I'll be, you can call me up, I'll be happy to talk to you on the phone, come down here and meet you, you can come by my office, whatever, whatever you'd like to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, new businesses, consideration of appointment of committee to state pension and retirement plan contributions for city employees, and I'll call on Councilman Randy Wallace to hand it back.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been looking at this for quite a while, I think the city department needs to do some type of study on it, but legacy costs for prior employees have come to the forefront of concerns for governmental entities, and by legacy, legacy cost, I'm talking about retirement costs for retired employees, as well as health insurance for retired employees. Increased lifespan, early retirement, rise in healthcare costs, investment returns have all affected the funding of these costs. Some cities are even to point across the nation of considering the possibility of taking bankruptcy due to this, and I don't think the city of Jackson's anywhere near that, but if we don't take a look at where we stand on these costs, so we'll know the effect it'll have on the future taxpayers, I think we're not doing a service as a, as a city council. Originally, when I brought this to the attention of the, the council, I was planning on recommending appointing a committee to study these costs, but when we discussed this at the city council gender review meeting, the mayor suggested that maybe we should, instead of having a committee of people that aren't as familiar with it, is hire somebody professional that is familiar with it, which was an excellent recommendation for the mayor, that's why we have such a great mayor, because he has great ideas. But therefore, rather than appoint a committee, I would like to make a motion that the city hire a professional firm to review the legacy costs of the city, both the health insurance costs and the retire, retirement costs and retirement payments into our city retirement plans.
Okay, we'll make that in the form of a motion. Could I ask the council to also consider as part of that motion, a three-member committee to work with the director of purchasing and establishing the criterion for RFQ, be involved in the interview with the companies involved, and assist the purchasing director in issuing a PO to the, to the company that the committee feels like would be best suited to.
But before we get a second on that, I'd like, I'd like, also like to give a little leeway on when we do that, is maybe have it done within the next nine months or so, sooner the better, but depending on what the cost we find, we may have to put that in next year's budget, so that's why I want to kind of put that in there also.
And that's one reason, really, I wanted to point a, a three-member committee to, to work through that with the Department of Purchasing, and if there's no objection, I'll ask Councilman Wallace, Councilman Newdacre, and Councilman Brooks to serve on that committee to, to follow up on RFQs, to see if it's affordable, see if, be involved in some interviews with those companies, to see which should be selected to perform the work if they do it. Any objection to that being a part of the?
No, that's, that's fine, no.
Okay, is there a second to that?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item six, acceptance of letter of resignation of Councilman Johnny Dodd, Councilman of the Second District of the City of Jackson, and this being a council issue, I would defer to, to council on any strategies that council may want to employ to get that position filled. And for the start of a dialogue, I'll call on the Vice Mayor to see if there are any, any strategies which the council would like to adopt in filling this position.
Okay, are we going to accept the resignation first, or?
I think we're to officially, to officially accept that resignation, I think would be in order, then we can get into, is there, is there a motion?
So move.
We have a motion, is a second?
Second.
Have a second discussion, council, please vote.
And the motion passes, seven in favor and one abstained.
Okay, thank you.
To the mayor and council, and to the listening audience, the council replacement procedures would be as follows, must be eighteen years of age or older, must be a qualified resident of this, of the district, must submit a request to be considered a candidate to the mayor's office no later than February twenty-second at five P.M. And for the replacement to take a seat on the council, he must get two-thirds of council vote, which is six votes, to fill that position. Are there any questions concerning council replacement?
Is that a resume?
Yeah, submit a resume to mayor's office no later than February twenty-second.
It'll be the, in the mayor's office to get those resumes in the council's hands as quickly as possible after the door closes on the twenty-second for you all, so. Consideration, staff will verify residency and, and other components of nominating a qualified candidate. Any other, any other dialogue as far as the replacement?
One question, I'm assuming that at the May meeting when we do that vote, when somebody gets two-thirds, that they'll start serving at the May meeting immediately?
Is that March?
The March, the March meeting? If, if there's no objection, council, I think the sooner we have the district represented, I think we'll be better served, I think we'll, if there's no objection, do it pretty much the same way as we did Councilman Cisco, is we'll call a recess, have a little swearing in, and then you counsel.
So we'll do that first meeting then?
Do we need to vote a little bit in, or?
I don't think it, I don't think it's necessary, yeah, yeah. Item seven is the board appointments, keep Jackson Beautiful Board, reappointment of Sandy McDermott to that board, the tree board is, reappointment of Kevin Andrews and David Middlebrooks. We can take these individually or collectively?
Take them collectively, if you'd like.
Tree board, reappointment of Kevin Andrews and David Middlebrook, Plan Commission, reappointment of Mary Bearden, Historical Zoning Commission, reappointment of Mary Bearden, Parks Advisory Board, reappointment of Pat Mingledoor, and Jackson Downtown Revenue Finance Corporation, reappointments of Nell Huntsman and Seth Chandler. Is there a motion?
We'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
A second discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Item eight is the consideration of budget amendments.
Good morning. We have four amendments for consideration today. The first one is civic center capital in the amount of four thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The civic center is in need of replacing two ticket printers for the events that they have at the civic center in Omen Arena. This was discovered during the preparation for the bull riding event at Omen Arena. Cost of the printers, four thousand three seventy-seven, and this will be a draw on fund balance.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion, council, please vote.
The vote is unanimous.
Second amendment for consideration today is to groundskeeping capital. The groundskeeping department needs to replace diesel fuel tanks due to problems with leakage. The cost of the tanks is fifty-seven hundred dollars. This will also be a draw on fund balance.
So move.
Have a motion, is it a second?
Second.
Have a second discussion, council, please vote.
Vote unanimous.
Third amendment for today is- Third amendment for today is, pretty much goes along with what you approved last month. This is an amendment to increase the old city pension allocation for the COLA that was given to city employees last month in the amount of 1.5%. The amount of this will be $6,217.50, and this is a draw on fund balance.
So moved.
Have a motion, second discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote unanimous.
The fourth amendment that we have today is an amendment for repair and maintenance completed on the police helicopter in the amount of $61,414.99. Again, this is a draw on fund balance.
Question. Were these items not put in the budget?
I think they're, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, I think $60,000 was in the budget, and they cost 61, so you're talking about a $1,000 difference.
And they have some routine monthly things that was supposed to come out of the $60,000, so the 61 threw them way over.
So the amendment we're just doing is just for $1,414.99?
No, we're doing it for $61,414, because the $60,000 was to cover their monthly maintenance, and this was an unplanned expenditure that came up for repairs.
Okay, so the 461,000 is the?
Yes.
Yeah. Never mind. I know. Is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion. Second, second discussion. Council, please vote.
The motion passes seven to one.
Thank you.
Item eight is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
A motion, a second?
Question.
Have a question.
There's a couple of items that I, that I'm not familiar with, and I think it's Errol Martin Time America, we're doing something parts and services, is that the $61,000 that we're talking about? I'm getting a head shake, okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that was that. And there was a second one that I wasn't familiar with as well, give me a second here. Terry Moore, that's the basketball league, is that right? Is that church league, b-ball?
That is correct. Mr. Moore coordinates our empire officials for the Sportsplex, as well as our church league basketball, and so it is paid to him, and then he pays his employees through that fund, so it's the empire official fund.
Stay with me, one more question. I've got to get to the second page. Nope, that's it, thank you.
Please move.
Is there, is motion, a second?
There's a motion, I just did a second. I didn't hear one.
Second.
We have a second discussion. Council, please vote.
Motion passes seven to one.
Before adjournment, my chair recognizes Councilman Hayes.
I'd just like to request the citizens and all be in prayer for Mr. Harvey Buchanan. Harvey will be leaving today, going to Vanderbilt, will have some very serious surgery tomorrow, and just appreciate everybody thinking about him tomorrow and remembering him in our prayers.
Man.
Thank you, council. There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.